Good morning, everyone. Let's stand for the prayer and pledge allegiance to the- Commissioner Harvey, would you lead us in prayer today?
Dear Lord, blessings. We thank you for the blessings and the bounty that we have in Washington County. Let us be rightly guided as we deliberate here to consider the issues in front of us, that we might find answers and understand your will and your wisdom. I'd just like to add a quote from a verse to help guide us, and I'll quote it. "And let us not grow weary while doing good, for in due season we shall reap if we do not lose heart." Let us not lose heart in doing the job of our citizens, and let us be good stewards in conducting our business day after day, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America-
And to the republic for which it stands-
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call today's meeting to order. We begin with the approval of minutes, July 19th, July 25th. Dawn, was everybody here for all four of those, for those two, all four of us? Anybody need to abstain? If not, entertain a motion to approve both at the same time.
Motion to approve? Oh, go ahead.
I will abstain through the July 19th.
Okay, we'll do them separate then. Okay, do I have a motion to approve July 19th minutes?
I motion to approve the July 19th minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Kiefer, for the reminder. Now do I have a motion to approve July 25th minutes?
I make a motion to approve the July 25th minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Here now, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we'll start with Commissioner reports and comments. Commissioner Wagner, would you go first today?
Yes, good morning. First of all, I'd like to recognize, I see two hats out there. I see a Marine and Army, right? I'd like to thank you guys and recognize you, your service. I think last week, we had another business open at Fort Ritchie. Fort Ritchie's really grown. It was called Flat Top Suites. It's a salon slash skincare dermatology type thing. There's five or six stations in there. It'd be worth some, y'all riding up there, whoever might be listening, needs a very well-renovated salon and check it out. I went to Boonsborough, I guess it was yesterday, and the divers were supposed, you know, Boonsborough's having reservoir problems. We all know that, and they had a leak, and well, there was a mis-scheduling, and the divers will be back next Monday. So anybody that didn't hear it, boiling water yesterday was rescheduled for next Monday in Boonsborough. But the divers, and I mentioned it before, they service, these divers come from Mount Airy area, fire and rescue, they're part of a department. They come up, don't charge us anything. We gave them a stipend before, and this time, you know, I'd really like us to address possibly giving these divers, these divers a stipend of some type, because they're always on call for us, and we need them, they're here. And to pay somebody to do that would be enormously expensive. Though what they'll do is they'll dive into the reservoir, Black Rock, they're working on the ponds, they'll dive into the reservoirs and look for the leaks, sandbag them or whatever they do. But they, they're top-notch. So I don't know if we can get that on a-
Make it an agenda item, that might be something that we just, well, Michelle, it's kind of administrative-
Yeah, we'll catch, we'll catch it, because they're not here till next Monday anyway, so. That's all, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Kiefer?
Sure, I just have a couple of things. Wanted to thank our staff who throughout today provided some updates to the commissioners and to many other people throughout our municipalities of the storm damage, the potential for storm damage. I think we fared better than some of our sister counties to the east of us. But just thanks to our staff, Public Works, Emergency Services, who were either working or on call to handle that situation. I know some communities were hit by hail and had some damage, but I think we fared probably better than what was anticipated. Would also like to mention, I had a conversation recently with Paul Frye, the Chamber of Commerce. I think some of you may have as well related to a housing task force that's going on right now. I think the Chamber may be spearheading it. Thankful that we have a county staff member who's part of that, I think Jonathan Horowitz at least. And just some ideas that I had heard about.
We're back. I'm sorry, I was, we didn't have any audio for a moment, and I didn't know whether to go to recess, but we're back. Art interruption here, Commissioner.
I'll just back up to my-
Please, that's, yeah, one of the-
Okay, the start of my last comment. I met with Paul Frye, the President of the Chamber of Commerce, recently. There was a task force on housing that's been started. I believe the Chamber may be spearheading it. I believe some of you may have spoken with Paul as well. We have a staff member, at least one, Jonathan Horowitz, in our Economic Development Department that's representing the county. But I just wanted to share a few ideas that I had as we progress with that, and hopefully, these are, these are taken into consideration. One, one of the reasons for housing needs, obviously, new jobs that are coming to our area, providing affordable housing, housing has, the cost of housing has really skyrocketed in recent years, and we want to make sure we don't, my hope is our market, our local market, doesn't outpace what local residents can afford. So looking at a lower price point, that might help keep residents here in Washington County, rather than going to neighboring counties where housing prices may be a little less expensive. Looking at capacities for, in school districts. School districts that are already crowded may not be an ideal location to build new expansive housing. If that's the road that we go down, maybe looking at school districts that could absorb some of that capacity and help those school districts out as well. And also, something I think is important, that any incentives that we may give, it's not just constructing new housing, but maybe rehabbing existing infrastructure that we have, especially in city areas and urban areas. Making sure that any incentives that, that might be asked for at the county are available, not just to developer, but also to maybe the owner-occupied purchaser of that property. Just making sure that incentives are available across the board if a dilapidated or a blighted property is purchased and rehabbed for someone's own use. I believe it would be nice if we looked at incentives for that as well. So I just wanted to share those ideas, and I'm sure this conversation will hopefully be ongoing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Derek Harvey, sir?
Oh, thank you, sir. I would note that the comprehensive plan is out, and given Wayne's comments, I think some of those issues that Wayne addressed are worthy of discussion as we look at the comprehensive plan going forward. And I believe the, we have two dates for public hearings on the comprehensive plan later this month, later this month in August. And the first one would be 23 August at 6:00 PM in Hancock. And then the following one would be the 31st of August in Clear Springs, also at 6:00 PM. And that information is on the county webpage. I also noted that the, there was a vote on the Dollar General up in Cascade, and I was curious about that and how the, our local newspaper covered it. I'm not sure, you know, what to think about the vote at this point in time, because I think there was some confusion, and maybe there's good reason for that, about what actually is a grocery and what should qualify as a special exception. So I'm looking into that. I've asked for the recordings of that, so I could understand all the discussion and the thinking of the members. But I don't think there are certain things that should have been determinative about making that decision. It's not about whether or not we think it's a good idea or not for that area to have it. It's not about whether or not they sell bananas or some other foodstuffs. You know, I think the definition of a grocery needs to be clearly spelled out, and I'd ask staff, Michelle Gordon, I'd ask staff to take a look at our definitions for these areas. What is a grocery? Because if, can a convenience store be called a grocery store? Because they sell some food items. Is an AC&amp;T a grocery store? Because it sells bananas and food such as bread and donuts and things like that. So I think we need to get clarity on that. I'm not making a judgment on their decision. I just think if there's a debate about what a grocery store is, it's clear we don't have a good definition. So Maryland Department of Environment is going to have a meeting at HCC tonight. And county staff, as well as the county commissioners, met with the new Secretary of the Maryland Department of Environment last week and had a good meeting where we raised a number of our concerns about some of the rules that impact our citizens, such as the issue on septic tanks and maintaining, you know, to the highest new standard, which is very costly. It seems that septic tanks can cost the median family income, a whole median family income, $65,000 to put in a septic based upon the new standards. And that's concerning to us. We raised those kinds of issues there. And then on a, on a fun note, I met with the, I went out to the Maryland Trappers Association Annual Event at the Ag Center. They had a crab feast Friday night. Jeff, were you there?
I was there, the next day, Saturday. It was Mr. Legas' birthday on Saturday.
Great, great. It was a nice event. If you didn't know anything about trapping, and I don't know much about trapping, I learned a lot, and the food was really, really good. And the last plug is Leidersburg Peach Festival this coming weekend in Leidersburg, Saturday and Sunday. It's a great event, lots of good food and things to do. So look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you. For my report, I do want to thank all the first responders for all the storm emergencies last night, especially our law enforcement, our DES, and our county highway people all involved in that. I was actually told Highway even had some of our mechanics out helping remove trees from the roads. They were sworn with that many down trees. So thank you to all the first responders responding to those emergencies last night. Also want to add, we also have the Clearspring Carnival tonight, a lot of good things. If you listen to Lou Scali this morning, there was a lot of stuff going on in Washington County in the month of August. I too attended the grand opening of Flat Top Suites up in Fort Ritchie. Every, seems like every other week, there's something new going on, happening up there. And I urge you to go see the Ritchie Boys slash Korean War Museum. You know, you'll be fascinated and a tribute to those veterans up there for that. I also attended the Tri-County Membership Meeting last week up in Garrett County. It was a membership meeting for all involved. That was well-attended. And I went to the Boonsborough National Night Out. I usually try to go to two, but I was having such a good time at Boonsborough. And it seems that all the communities that had the National Night Out in Washington County did well, well-attended. So thanks to those communities for doing that and bringing awareness to our police officers. Also went to the Fire Association Picnic Saturday or so ago. It was good to see that all the volunteers and their families and grandchildren all out there enjoying themselves. And when you look in the faces, these are the people that not just go to save and protect your property, but also protect your life. So I was very appreciated to be in, to have been invited to that event. And I too attended the meeting with the secretary. Very enlightening. She was warm and receptive to many of our conversations. So that concludes my report.
Jeff, I had forgotten one thing.
Please do.
It, I want to acknowledge, and I'm sure we've all got numerous calls from citizens who are putting in cable networks and high-speed internet in front of their homes. And we're dealing with it pretty well. Today, actually, we, the staff here is going to make some comments about it. So, you know, we're listening to you, and there's some things in action. I think staff will help update that.
Okay, with that being said, I want to go to staff comments, and Mr. Hobbs, you're up.
Good morning, Scott Hobbs, Director of Engineering. Thanks for the introduction. We've been receiving calls and emails about the various fiber utility work around the county. So I wanted to provide a brief summary about the work. Currently, the most active fiber companies in the county are Point Broadband, Comcast, and Intitum Cable. Point Broadband uses micro trenching in the road with specialized equipment. And the other two companies use a more conventional method of utility installation along the edge of the road, using excavators or hand-digging trenching machines, directional drilling. The county issues a utility permit authorizing the work within the county right-of-way and provides conditions of work in the permit. The county right-of-way is unique in each neighborhood and often extends beyond the paved surface of the road. There are also utility easements in various locations. The construction inspector from our Permits and Inspections Office monitors the work in progress and is a point of contact. We ask that citizens contact the construction inspector with issues related to the work, and they will deal with the issue or provide information regarding the utility contact information. The utility permit has a bond involved with the utility work and maintenance period. The contractor must restore the property within the right-of-way to the condition prior to the start of the work and for the performance bond to be released. We've been hearing about notifications around the county. Some of the property owners have been notified in advance, and others receive door tags just prior to the start of work. The utility company has been directed to provide ample notice prior to the start of work. So we've been talking with them continuously about that notification process also, as well as the future work going on. So with that, if there's any questions?
Yeah.
Oh, never mind.
Okay, go ahead.
There had been more talk, Scott, about, you know, we have, what, three or four inspectors? There had been some mention that just to keep an eye on things, it's like, give you an example, dig up a hole in a yard, it happened in my yard, and it's brown. Nobody's going to water it, except with the exception of last night. So it's going to be brown. So we had talked about more inspectors, maybe subbing some more inspectors to get, is that a possibility? Or is that a far-fetched idea to sub some extra inspectors and move around the county and look?
Right, that's a possibility. We have a contract with outside inspection that we use for various projects throughout the county, and that's something we can look into. Our three inspectors have the various areas in the county, and they do a wonderful job of tracking the work. But they also have all their other responsibilities with different construction development going on in the county. But any time that we've received calls or emails, they're the first point of contact and resolve any issues that the property owners may have. A lot of it comes to get contact, and the door tags, they provide information about contacting a certain number for utility company representative. And at times, that's been challenging for our citizens. So the, our construction inspectors do a wonderful job finding the supervisor of that area of that utility company and getting that conversation going between the property owner and the utility company. So, but we can look more into-
And there was one under mentioned possibly of prolonging the bond period, so we can go back and double-check and make sure the work's been done. Is that, and by the way, you've been, your department, you have been very receptive when we've called. You've contacted a client, and so that means a lot to us too, because, you know, they're hearing it from you, and I'm not screwing the information up to them. But the bond thing, is that a deadline on that? Or can we make that a little longer to make sure the work's done properly?
We can look into that, the extension. So far, we've had good success with the follow-through on any of the restoring of the county right-of-way within that maintenance period. But it's something that we can look into. And with our office here in engineering, we issue conditions of the permit. Really, it's about safety and traffic control involved and the grading involved with the work. And then from the permits and inspection side, then they monitor the work. So it's a team effort here moving forward. And that's where we coordinate again with the inspectors, and we get calls from some of the citizens. We pass them along to Ralph Vicki and Kristen, who, like I said, do a wonderful job really having coordination with the community on what's going on in the area.
My question is, citizen calls, it's been weeks since insulation's been performed, and their yard's a mess, there's equipment there. You recommend calling your office, your staff, to put them in touch with, or being reimbursed for the damages or repairs? What's that process for that average citizen to do?
Contact our office, Permits and Inspections Office. Like I said, one of the inspectors tracks all of the work that's going on and anything that's still outstanding before that gets accepted.
We refer you to refer them to you.
Before it gets accepted, we take a look at that. And we've seen throughout this period, they've been working here for several months in the area. We've seen that they follow-through. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer, and that's where our inspection staff and our staff is keeping track of those things to make sure that they follow-through on, on again, establishing back to the county right-of-way, what, you know, to the existing conditions that they have.
Is there any idea how long they're going to be doing this? I know they're going out to every community, but do we have a projection when they may be done this?
We've had some indications that it's, it's another year or two potentially of work of, yeah, in and around.
This has been ongoing for months as they hit neighborhoods earlier.
And I had one more question, is the roads, the micro trenching in the roads. I mean, you know, you got two narrows, I don't know what the term, but two narrow micro trenchings only coming down the road. Are we, do we have a way to gauge from past experiences that these hold up once they're done and patched? And is that to you a substantial repair when they're done? And would these things won't rear their ugly head and open up?
We've had conversations with other jurisdictions about the work and experiences they've had. And we feel comfortable with, you know, the technique that they're using and the way they're dealing with that.
Thank you.
Scott, excuse me, Scott, you may have just said this, and if you did, I apologize. You mentioned the work may continue for about another year. Do you have a schedule of like which neighborhood or which general part of the county and the city that they'll be operating? So we can maybe put down a schedule for the citizens, so they, it doesn't necessarily come as a surprise that in March of next year, there might be work in their neighborhood, that they can kind of anticipate that?
Sure. Yeah, so we get notification when they apply for the permit of the various areas they're going to be in. A lot of times, it's in, hey, here's the next, you know, several neighborhoods that we may be moving forward. Then it's a coordination with the inspectors typically and their staff to figure out which neighborhoods they'll be in. They, again, request permit in these different areas. But we've been put together some maps.
Notification too, correct?
Yes, and we've put together some maps, tracking the work that they're doing. But we're going to be active in that role to see where they're at, to place some information on the county website to provide that information and continue to get the information from the utility companies about them providing ample notice, like I said previously, to the property owners also.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add that the cost of providing additional inspectors would be approximately $100,000 to $120,000 per inspector. The cost would be very similar if we actually contracted that out to an outside firm during that time period. That, those are funds that are not currently budgeted for in his departmental budget. So we would need to come up with a funding source if we chose to go down that path.
It'd be my obsession, my position that we begin that process, so we have it ready. Because it doesn't seem like, no offense to the contractors, it has been very reliable notifying our citizens of the work and completing it. So maybe we should begin that and then just bring it back to decide.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess for me to make a decision, are you confident our inspectors have enough time to really put enough? And don't get me wrong, I know they're busy, and we don't have that many. But are you confident they have enough? Do you think we need to sub some inspectors to make it a smoother process?
Something we can talk more, Ralph's here with me. I told you Ralph Vicki and Kristen were the crews that are really keeping track of these things. And I know we're trying to make this a brief summary, but Ralph is here, and we'd really have to talk more with the inspectors about, and the crew, about how that relates.
Can you go ahead and just begin that process, see how it can start, how we can? Mr. Weaver, if you have a comment, come up forward, please.
Comment, the way our process is set up is we're holding that bond, so if there are any kind of inspectors.
It's, utilities takes about, two years ago was 10% of what we did. Because we do service requests, you know, construction, all the new, the stool mortar ponds, things like that. Now, we're just fighting fires. So, but your question is, the bond does not expire. It's a blanket bond, so we're good there.
Okay.
We don't have to worry about that. The other thing is for, we could hire inspectors, it's just going to make it smoother. But the process that we have right now with the bond, everything will be fixed, but it's just going to take time and patience. You know what I mean? So if you do hire these inspectors, it's just going to, I don't know, make it a smoother process.
Well, if you're one of those neighbors that ain't going smooth-
I understand, I deal with them every day, yeah.
If the commissioners would agree, possibly bring that back for further discussion to see how we could implement that. Do you guys agree to that?
I would like to see if maybe, if there's some issues being caused either by the contractor or the utility company, why aren't they more responsible for covering that cost? If maybe their communication isn't the best, why should county have to cover that if? I'm just, I'm curious about that.
You say the calls?
The calls of the inspectors.
If we're hiring an additional inspector or maybe a temporary contracted inspector.
Some of the crews are really good. Some of them, you know, they've already gotten, there was three primary contractors for Comcast. The one they got rid of because they were just not, they were substandard, I guess. So they're gone. So that, you know, that's helped a lot for us. But we still have some that are, you know, they're just-
So if they don't get their act together, do we have to issue subsequent permits? If they're, if they've shown us a bad track record, why do we have to just issue them their next permit? If they're not upholding what they were supposed to do previously? I just see that as adding a cost to the county. That's not really the county's fault.
Yeah, that's a good point, because we could use the caveat of the permit, not to issue that if they're continuing to hire contractors who aren't responsible. Wayne, is that kind of what you're saying?
That's exactly it, yeah.
And part of it is also just the notice to people, correct?
That's, that's the big-
And so, I mean, it could be draconian, but if, unless they're held accountable, they're not going to change their behavior. It's generally how I see things. And their life has consequences, and our citizens are being asked to bear the burden of that. Couldn't we have a cease and desist or a pause or a suspension of their, their activity at Comcast, et cetera, until they show that they're going to have better management of the practices?
Well, just this week, we had an issue with Comcast, and they- It was Van Leeuwen, it was in Van Leeuwen. Yeah, and what they did is, we contacted Comcast because we weren't getting good results right away. So they suspended that crew for, I think, two days is what they did, Comcast themselves. So they are, they're trying to straighten them up also. But there's just so many crews going, it's a, Comcast and Point Broadband are racing right now and trying to be the first one to your door to offer a new product other than the Intitum Cable. So it's, it's just, it's very hectic out there.
I would suggest you put, that's what Commissioner Kiefer suggested, is you put together and come back in another time with our options.
Soon.
Is, is, yeah, yeah, soon. With our options, like, I don't know if legally we can do that, if we can't. With the options, here's your options, county commissioners. Here's what you can do, and here, and here's how much it's going to cost for inspectors. Is there a chance they can fund those inspectors? And I'd like to hear it more than when you can really do the research and have good answers. You know, that's what I'd sort of like to see.
Okay.
Because right now, we're all short of shooting from the hip. We don't know what's legal, what we can do, what contracts say, you know, bonding says, so.
Are you bringing that back for an agenda item, commissioners? You okay with that? Let's see, you all nod?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Next, Kendall, are you ready, prepared to come up?
Good morning, Commissioners. Kendall Desonier, Deputy County Attorney, Nitroim Human Resources Director. The Board of County Commissioners have extended a conditional offer of employment to a candidate for the position of Director of Human Resources. The candidate has conditionally accepted the Board's offer, punting an affirmative vote by this Board. Therefore, a Board Member's motion to employ Stephanie Grove for Director of Human Resources at grade 19, step 18, with an annual salary of $140,670 would be appropriate at this time.
I motion to approve.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion?
I'll just make a comment that I will abstain. I look forward to meeting Ms. Stephanie Grove, but I was not present for the interviews due to my vacation, so I'll abstain.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Make note, that's three, and one extension. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Kendall, anything else do you have?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Continuing with staff comments, Dawn?
I'm stuck in Steph comments. I'm second Steph comment.
Oh, okay. Brian Albert, please come forward.
Sheriff Brian Albert, I'm coming now, open session. We approved, I think it was, I don't know if it was last week or two weeks ago-
Two weeks ago.
In a closed session for an increase in our bonus to patrol deputies and correctional deputies. deputies of ten thousand dollars. And, uh, we needed an, an open session vote for that. I don't, I don't know if we brought it back out in open session last time. And then the other was for the police information specialist. It was a new position that we started at the Sheriff's Department, and we needed approval for it, a vote for it.
So I'd make a motion on the first part to approve the bonus of ten thousand dollars for hiring of correctional officers.
Yeah, I would, I would second that, seeing as we saw it advertised already.
Yeah.
I saw it in Hancock being advertised too, so great job.
I got Harvey's pointing at the poster, yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Harvey, Harvey was advertising for us. I think they gave him an application at Hancock.
They gave me a few to pass around.
Yeah.
All right, have a first and a second, any further discussion?
And Sheriff, when we discussed this, you have some salary savings where this would likely be funded from?
Currently, we have twelve vacancies and with a projection of, uh, at least two more retirements by the end of the year.
Okay. So it's salaries being paid out and the salaries just in a different way?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you have a second issue?
The second was for the police information specialist. We, we moved positions around. We used to have a crime analyst at the Narcotics Task Force, which was a different position. We're going to use some of the savings from that to fund this position partially. And then the other savings we had were some other savings within the department. Be no budget cost to the commissioners. We would absorb it in the Sheriff's Department salary, uh, salaries.
So that will realign so you can have more efficiency and then relieve some pressure in another area and add a new capability, right?
That is correct.
Okay, I make a motion to approve that.
First and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four oh. Thank you very much. Okay, Dawn, are you up?
I, I have second session.
Okay, you don't have any reports?
After closed session, the second staff comment.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, I have it on here. All right, Michelle, would you continue?
Okay. I was able to greet and meet the Maryland State Comptroller, Brooke Lerman, during her recent tour of Washington County. And I just want to point out that Commissioner Barr also met her that afternoon. I attended National Night Out in Shaffer Park and would like to thank our first responders for all that they do for the citizens of Washington County. I'd also like to thank, thank staff for setting up the county's booth, for providing information to citizens. I attended the grand opening of Flat Top Suites at Fort Ritchie. And since I was unable to attend the last meeting, I did not have the opportunity to announce and welcome Bob McCoy as the county's new director of the Washington County Emergency Communications Center. He is in the audience today. Bob started on July the twenty fourth, and we're excited to have him on our leadership team. Bob and I have spoken and met several times since then, and I look forward to working with him. Uh, I sent you an email last week regarding the upcoming United States Semi-Quincentennial or two hundred fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. In two thousand twenty-six, we will commemorate this event, and state and federal, local agencies are beginning their planning now. I'd like a consensus of the commission to form a county committee chaired by Public Relations and in conjunction with local stakeholders so that we can begin the county's planning for the two hundred fiftieth anniversary of the founding of the United States. Do I have a consensus of the commission to form a committee?
Commissioners, are we okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I see.
Jeff will chair it for three years.
No, no.
I'd also, yeah, are there any commissioners who would be willing to or would like to actually sit on that committee?
I will, I will volunteer for that.
Derek, okay.
We'll also ask Commissioner Barr as well, see if he's interested.
Okay.
Thank you, anything else?
I do have a couple more things. I'd also like to thank staff for their quick response to yesterday's severe weather. Emergency management, emergency services, public relations, and our county road crews quickly mobilized and reached out to municipalities to address any calls that came in for service. We have no meeting next week. We do have our next meeting on August the twenty-second. And President Barr would like to remind residents that as kids get ready to go back to school, Maryland's tax-free week returns this month to help consumers purchase clothes and supplies. So from August the thirteenth to August the nineteenth, qualifying clothing and footwear of a one hundred dollars or less will be exempt from the state's six percent sales tax. Also, the first forty dollars of any backpack purchase will also be tax-free, and anyone can take advantage of the, of those deals. They don't have to have children, I just wanted to remind you of that. That's everything that I have.
Thank you, any other staff I missed? If not, we'll move forward with citizens' participation. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment about an issue or issues of county practice and interest. This is not an interactive dialogue or question and answer session. It is solely a time to hear citizen comment. Please limit your remarks to approximately three minutes or less, and please state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone here for citizens' participation? Good morning. Please state your name and address.
My name is Mary Harringa, and I am the Uniserve Director for the Washington County Teachers' Association on Oak Ridge Drive in Hagerstown. As I looked through the agenda for today's meeting, I noted several of the items included increases to salaries and increased funding for various groups and county needs. I know these are needed and deserved. Increases in funding and salaries in our school district are also needed and deserved. We continue to lose high-quality staff at all levels to our neighboring counties and states. Just last week, I spoke with one of our members, a teacher, who is struggling to make ends meet. She's a single mother, and she works two extra jobs in order to pay her bills. Even with the extra jobs, there are still nights when she does not eat dinner so that she can make sure that her child has enough, enough food to eat. She doesn't want to leave Washington County, but she doesn't know how much longer she can do this, both mentally and physically. She wants to go back to school for her master's degree or national board certification so she has an opportunity to increase her salary. But as you know, these are expensive programs that she would have to pay for upfront before having some of the tuition reimbursed from the district. I encourage you to continue to look at increasing revenue and make a mid-year budget adjustment so that we can continue to provide high-quality education and services for our Washington County students and families. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Continuing with citizens' participation, anyone else? You're, you're up. Gentlemen, please introduce yourselves and your address.
Good morning, my name is Kenneth Wilson, and I live at eleven fourteen Outer Drive here in Hagerstown. And I am here to discuss the running of the senior center. It's not running to its full capacity. It's starting to get back up. And we don't have a cafeteria. And there's limited rooms over there that we can use. It's not geared for the seniors itself. They, we're treated like little children. And what I would like to do is we can get our cafeteria running again. And I have here two senior centers that I belong to, one in Georgia and one in California. And I gave Mr. Wagner over there a brochure to people to look over, to say how their senior center is run. And they have meals on wheels that the senior centers get. The same thing, and, and some of those meals, you should see some that they get. The county cut, does it. And I don't know why our school board can't do it here. They were doing it at one time when we first started doing Meals on Wheels. And then they cut it out and they outsourced it. And I, what I can't understand is why the board can't do it. Cook for meals and then have it sent in containers to the senior center, and then we can purchase them there. Because a meal down there only costs three dollars. And if you see, uh, I think that some of the, the meals on there, the menu was in that book, I'm pretty sure. But they do have some really nutritious meal. They have crab cakes, freeze cheese, uh, lasagna and stuff like that. And baked pork chops, fried chicken. This is the seniors, excuse me, the, uh, Meals on Wheels get this. And the seniors are able to get it too. And I don't understand why we can't go back to what we were doing, what they were, the board was doing. They were cooking the meals, we were taking them up to Hancock. We went down to the Board of Education and get them. And then they said that you don't have to come here anymore, you go up to the school, high school in Hancock and deliver the meals from there. And, but anyway, like I said, I just wanted to know why we can't get this senior center running like it should be. I know COVID kind of put the kibosh on what happened, but they didn't gear back up properly. It was too slow. Out there, I know we, they went back in twenty, I think it was twenty twenty-one, late twenty twenty-one, when they started their community back up again. They had masks and they had the distance again, everything. But the old folks didn't pay any attention to it, they just come right in. They were okay, as long as they weren't sick, they came.
Mr. Wilson, could you just summarize, because you're getting close to your three minutes?
Okay.
If you would like to speak as well. Anything else you would like to say?
Okay, uh, my name is Kelvin Newby, and my address is one, two, three, two, five, Gemstone, spelled G-E-M-S-T-O-N-E Lane, here in Hagerstown. I, Mr. Wilson and I, we've been friends over, over eleven years. And, uh, I met him, uh, when we was at the Western Maryland Hospital, the center was there at the time. And so, at that time, we was allowed to bring our lunch to the center, and they had refrigerators for us to put it in. So when we moved to the current location on, uh, East Franklin Street, building's wonderful, but they did not have a refrigerator, but they had a full-service cafeteria, and we used it, which was great. Of course, when COVID came along, they had to close it down, but they never reopened the cafeteria. My problem is, okay, I know maybe they cannot get the food, staff to work it, but they closed the, the dining area from eleven thirty to one thirty, which we cannot eat in the center. So if we come early, we cannot eat. And there's no refrigerators for us to put our meals, uh, in. And early on, before COVID, we offered to buy a refrigerator for the center. We had a bunch of us that were going to put money together and, uh, you know, and have a refrigerator, uh, put in, but we always got the question, let me ask back, what we checking to, we checking to it. Somewhere, I can't remember between, well, every year we, we registered, like with this, what I got here, we had to register, we registered every year at the center. They gave us surveys to fill out. And it was one question was asked, uh, will we be willing to pay dues? And there was a whole bunch of other questions, which I can't remember. But this was before the, uh, COVID nineteen. And they never got back to us, even though when I asked many times, what was the results on the survey? Well, we still working, we're still working on it. But my thing here is, is that, uh, again, cafeteria itself, I think should be open. I, I thought it was, I thought the center was for us, because we was told before they opened up the center on Frank Street, things going to be better, which it was for a while, but when COVID nineteen hit, it's not fully open for us. And I kind of disagree with, with, with Mr. Wilson, he's my buddy, and he might beat me up because he's Marine, I'm a Army guy. We're getting parked a lot. But anyway, that, I don't feel like they just, they don't treat, treat us like children, they just don't understand what we want and what we need. Because, you know, uh, after, you know, you become senior, you know, uh, we have other interests in life, and we kind of geared toward each other or gravitate toward each other, or, or the seniors, and it's a whole bunch of us. A lot, a lot of them is not going to say anything. They could, we, they were complaining or money each other, but they don't want to step up, so that's why we're here today.
Could, could I just ask you to sum up, because we're getting past your three minutes?
Okay, okay.
If you could, sir, thank you.
But I feel like all, all the staff that I have came in contact with at the senior center, you know, I, I felt like they, they treated us, no, treated, treated me pretty. And Mr. Paul, I think he's still mad at you. Great guy, great guy, great guy. One other thing, I know I might be running over a little bit, but just to show you how much heart that Mr. Wilson and I have in the county itself, we've been Meals on Wheels volunteers since twenty eighteen. We live in Hagerstown, and a lot of other drives didn't want to accept it, but we did Hancock for about two years. We also are volunteering for the Washington County Hospice, vet to vet. So we've been doing that since twenty nineteen. We also, up until last year, we're going to start back up again, Salvation Army, we, we, him and I would go to Sam's once a month, and we spent about two hundred dollars apiece and bought food to their kitchen once a month. And also, I am a member of the Alps since twenty thirteen, and I volunteer for the Bingo Program every Thursday. So just wanted to let you know, our hearts into doing things for communities, but in turn, we want something. And the only thing we're asking that, that this, uh, person, which is Amy, who runs the center, listen to what we are asking for. And one way of doing that is for us to have a committee, just for seniors, that we could talk to each other and make the presentation to Amy or whoever we need to, and they will respond back to us and give us, okay, this is what it is, we can, we cannot do. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
This, it's kind of hard, because I'm not a public speaking person, but.
You did fine, you went. Is there anyone else here for citizens' participation?
Thank you, Ken and Kelvin.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Seeing none, we'll continue with the next item. Next on agenda is a public hearing concerning the Maryland Agriculture Land Preservation Program Application Priority Ranking Formula for Washington County. The purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony concerning potential changes to the ranking criteria to evaluate and prioritize applications for preservation easements. The procedure is as follows. County staff will introduce the matter, after which the hearing will be open for public comment. Each speaker will be given a maximum of three minutes to testify. After everyone who wishes to speak has done so, the hearing will close. The commissioners, the commissioners may then discuss the issue and take any action that they deem appropriate according adoption or rejection of the proposal, or they may take issue under, this issue under advisement and deliberate at a later date. Ms. Baker, would you please introduce the matter? And commissioners, please hold your questions to after public testimony. Baker, please.
Morning, thank you. Jill Baker, I'm the Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning. As stated here today, is a public hearing to change the easement ranking for the Agricultural Land Preservation Program, particularly for the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation Fund. If you may recall, back in June thirteenth, we brought before you the annual rankings for the MOUTH Program that we do every year, whereby we rank the properties based upon a formula, which is enclosed within your agenda packet, ranking each of those to decide who gets funded for that year. As part of that presentation, we talked extensively about a very particular criteria within the ranking, which dealt with the proximity of easements to the. criteria within the ranking, which dealt with the proximity of easements to the urban or town growth areas. At that time, um, the commissioners had mentioned that they wanted to change that based upon the comments made and the, um, recommendations made by the Land Preservation Advisory Committee. So what you have in your packet is just that. It's a summary of that change that was requested. On the formula sheet, you will see where the changes are that, um, we are reversing or, or flipping the, the formula for that criteria, whereby the closer to the growth area boundaries you are, the more points you get up to five, whereas the further away you get fewer points. That's all I have at this point. I'm happy to, oh, you got to get.
Yes. Okay. We will now open the public hearing, the hearing for public comment. Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward, give us your name, address, and tell us what you'd like to know. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify? Do the commissioners have any questions? I've seen no public comment. Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, any comments or course of action?
Just a, a question maybe I should have asked in the previous, a couple of seconds ago. Since this is a public hearing, was any written testimony received? I don't see any included in our package.
No, no, no comments have been received, written or verbal.
Okay, so the only innocence testimony or recommendation we have is from our Ag Land Preservation Board?
Correct.
Okay.
So if I'm a mile from the growth area, I'll get four points instead of one point.
That's right.
And, uh, and I've been very familiar with this point system from being on that for four years. So what we're, I think the intent of this and what the intent of the committee was, was to, what it'll do is preserve more land, which will maybe hinder some development, but it'll preserve more land in, in the growth area is basically what it's going to accomplish. And I don't, and from looking at the last one, I don't think this new formula would have, would have really hurt any. I, I worry about hurting people on this thing. I didn't see it from, I think the questions we asked Chris last time was with this new point system, it probably wouldn't have changed the ranking anyway. Would you agree on that or?
It would have changed it slightly, but not to any great degree.
It wouldn't have knocked somebody out that's been on the list for 20 years.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this. I fully support it.
Is there a second?
I'd like to make a second. My hope is that maybe farms that didn't consider themselves eligible because maybe they were too close to that urban growth area may now apply. So, second.
I have first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Four, oh.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we're going to convene as the Board of Health. Do I need a motion for that? I need a motion to convene as a Board of Health?
I'll make a motion, I'll second.
I have first and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, four, oh. Mr. Stoner, introduce yourself in the matter.
Earl Stoner, the Health Officer for Washington County Health Department. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here today to, um, seek the Commissioner's approval, to award a contract to Girls Inc. of Washington County in the amount of $34,328 for this, I guess, current fiscal year, starting July 1st. It's for the Sexual Risk Avoidance Education Program that they do in conjunction with Washington County Public Schools. And it's a, um, abstinence-based curriculum that's focused on sixth graders throughout all the middle schools in Washington County. It is, uh, obviously mainly for the kids, but it seeks parental involvement, parental and student skill building and all those good things. Girls Inc. was the sole bidder for this procurement. We've worked with them, uh, for many, many years now. Basically, this is federal money that's passed down through the state, uh, to the local jurisdiction. And we contracted out. And as I mentioned, for many, many years, uh, Girls Inc. has been the contractor for this, working with the school system.
Yeah, I just have one question, Earl. Who, who polices this and who watches the curriculum and, and who, who makes sure people are certified, those kind of things?
We do. They use, uh, they use what's called the three R curriculum. It's an evidence-based curriculum that's approved, um, on the federal level. There are components that, uh, each evidence-based curriculum, curriculum needs to adhere to. But locally, we do that. We ensure that individuals who are facilitating those are certified and that, uh, performance measures and all those things are reported back to us, which then get reported back to the state and I'm assuming go back to the feds.
How many schools is this in?
There are, uh, eight schools, um, each middle school. But I think that, um, if I can remember correctly, there are actually two programs in Northern Middle School. Cause there's a, there are a lot of kids in that school that, um, partake in the program.
I've seen something here that says sixth graders in at least five Washington County Public Schools.
Yeah, well, we're, we're in, we're in eight middle schools.
Okay.
But as I mentioned, Northern Middle has, Northern Middle School has two programs.
Commissioners, any other comments? Motion to award the contract?
I'd motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion?
Earl, just a question, is this because it involves, um, students, it sounds like? Is this something that Washington County Public Schools needs to approve also? Or is that our responsibility as the county commissioners or the Board of Health?
No, we are basically, all that collaboration goes on between Girls Inc. and the school system.
Okay, so that's already happened?
That's already happened, yes. Basically, they're, they'll just continue doing what they've been doing.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now, need a motion to reconvene as county commissioners.
Motion to reconvene.
Second.
County Commissioner.
Okay, a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Pay increase for election judges. Mr. Jackson, please come forward, introduce yourself.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Congratulations, this is your first appearance as Director.
It is. Barry Jackson, Director.
We don't notice.
I'm here today to request that we increase our chief election judge pay to $300 per day. And I do have a bit of a presentation, which is in your packet, but just want to kind of give you the background on this. We previously paid our chief judges $225 and our, the rest of our election judges $175. In the 2022 general election, the commissioners approved a one-time pay increase to 275 for chiefs and 225 for all other judges. House Bill 1200 was passed this year by the General Assembly and signed by the governor, which now requires that all election judges in the state of Maryland make a minimum of $250 per day, uh, which of course is more than what we were currently, uh, previously paying our chief judges. Also, there's another stipulation that pays an additional $100 per day for returning judges. I guess just to incentivize folks to keep coming back every election. Training pay will be at least $50, which is more than the 25 we had been paying, uh, previously. However, the state board will reimburse each local board $50 of the $100 bonus pay that we're paying each returning judge. And then, of course, the last thing, and importantly, and why I'm here, local boards of elections may compensate election judges at a higher rate than the $250 within the limits authorized by the county governing body. And that's why I'm here today to get that approval from you all. And I've given you some, uh, perspective here from some of our similarly sized counties around the state, what they paid previously and what they plan to pay in 2024. Carroll County, as an example, uh, they will be paying their chiefs $330. And then they have different pay levels depending on the judge. We just pay everybody else the same rate other than the chiefs. Frederick County, uh, they were paying similar to what we were, 225 for chiefs, 175 for all other judges. They plan on paying their chiefs 300 and all other judges 250 in the 2024 election. Hartford County, uh, was already paying, uh, amounts at 250 and above. So they're going to keep those rates the same since they're within compliance with state law. St. Mary's was paying 250 for their chiefs and, uh, 200 for our other judges. They're going to be paying 300 and 250, which is what we were requesting. Western Maryland Counties, Allegheny was paying the same as we were, 225 for chiefs, 175 for all others. They were now going to be paying their chiefs 300 and all others 250. And then Garrett County, uh, was already at compliance at 275 and 250. So they're going to keep their judges at the same amount. And so what we're requesting today is that, uh, we are going to be paying all of the other judges $250, which is, uh, the minimum required. But we do request that chief judges make $300. And of course, the reason we do this is because our chiefs are the managers. They're responsible for everything that happens. So there is an added, uh, amount of responsibility there. And they also do some additional duties. They come and pick up the equipment before Election Day at, at the Board of Elections. They bring it back on Election Night. These are things that are in addition to what other judges do. And so we feel that, uh, they obviously should be making a little bit more, uh, than the other election judges. And so, um, what that does, since we're paying them an additional $50 above what all the other, um, election judges are making, that comes out to an increase in cost of about $5,600. But we also included in our packet that raw data, um, that you may have seen, that shows exactly what, um, we're going to be paying out through the entire year, um, for all of the election judges. And, um, turns out that since we decreased the amount of polling places for Election Day from 49 down to 40, we're actually going to be employing less election judges. And so, uh, even with the increase in the pay, uh, I think it's going to end up being, uh, about the same as what we had budgeted, to pay everybody. It may even end up being less. The, the key is going to be, are we going to have a third early voting site or not? If we have a third early voting site, that's going to add about a $40,000 increase. But of course, that depends on if we're at 100,000 voters, which we are not yet. And I don't think we are going to be there, so. But, um, that's what we're asking. If the, um, Commissioners could approve that, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Barry, thank you for that. Couple of quick questions. So you mentioned going from 49 to 40. Is that like Smithsburg going from two to one or Boonsboro going from two to one? They were co-located?
Yes, sir. Smithsburg will not be, but yes, Boonsboro, we're going to, um, bring that down to one polling place. Smithsburg is going to stay, we're going to have two there. Another example would be, um, in District Three, we have, uh, Emmanuel United Methodist, we have, um, Emma K. Dow, and we have Girls Inc. We're going to combine all those three into one and they're all going to be going to the Girls Inc. gym. So it's a nice big room. So we'll be able to accommodate that. So those are some of the examples of combining.
And then you did mention the potential for a third site by, that would be a requirement if we went over 100,000, correct? So, and that would be an additional cost of about
I think I'm getting ready now.
$40,000, you said?
Yes.
For early voting?
Yes, about $45,920. Now, we had budgeted for $33,600. So really the increased cost would be about $12,000.
And is there an option to do a third site anyway?
There is an option that the Commissioners would have to approve.
Okay, and then the issue of early voting sites, the downtown library had very little use and I received a number of complaints about the area down there. It is close in proximity to the Virginia Avenue site. Additionally, we've got substantial underserved populations in, say, the western part of the county who are complicated significantly because of time and distance to get to a poll. They don't have transportation, they don't have public transportation available to them. Large numbers of them receive government benefits or if they don't receive them by virtue of their income levels, they are eligible and they've just chosen because of their pride not to apply for those benefits. So that's, to me, the hallmark of a underserved community. Meets every criteria for me, except for maybe one. I would hope that the process will go forward and focus on trying to reach out to legitimately underserved communities like Hancock area and west of Clear Springer, South County. And can you keep us apprised of the process and let us, and explain to us the process here maybe right now?
Yes, sir. The Board is, um, throughout the summer been, um, discussing, uh, possible early voting centers. We do have some options, um, not just in the city of Hagerstown, but outside the city. Town of Hancock is one of them, Town Hall, uh, we've been out there and visited. And they're very willing to have us come out. There are some other areas, Fair Plate Fire Hall, Boonsboro, American Legion. These are sites that we didn't have available to us in 2022, unfortunately. And so, um, at the time, the library was all there was, you know? And so now we have options. Now, I can't speak for the Board. Again, the Board has been discussing it, the Board's going to vote on it probably in, uh, September, uh, because we have to let the State Board know in October what our early voting sites are going to be. So, um, we're meeting, the Board's meeting today, that's on the agenda to discuss. Uh, we're meeting at three o'clock this afternoon. So I can't really speak for them.
Is that open to the public?
It is open to the public.
And where is that going to be?
At our facility on Virginia Avenue, three o'clock. And again, like I said, the Board will be discussing it. All I can do is provide them with information.
Barry, Barry, you know that, you know, we, obviously we were all very disappointed in the second voting site.
I remember.
Yeah, you remember that. So, you know, I think it would be, I don't know how the Board's going to address this, but I think it would be, be, you know, it'd be kind of them to consider something that would serve as Commissioner Harvey was saying. I mean, I, I, I never agreed with the downtown side. I can see the logic behind it, but not that close to Virginia Avenue. But anyway, I'm not going to beat a dead horse here, but I, you know, I'm just getting my two cents in that.
All right, with, with all that being said, I'd like to get back to what is the recommended.
Yeah, I would motion to approve the election judges pay.
For a second?
I'll second, um, but I do have a question about what we were talking about. I second, I was just, I've been a chief judge and, um, I signed up for it not knowing that there was any kind of compensation. I just, I thought it sounded interesting as a high school student and I wanted to do it. But a chief judge has about 23 hours involved, almost a 16-hour day from start to finish. Uh, two hours roughly just to pick up your, your material a week before, four hours of training, give or take, and then maybe an hour the night before if you get to help set up. So that's not even minimum wage for the work that's done. So I, I support it. But I do have a question I, I wanted to mention if we're in another discussion. Not to belabor this anymore, but you said options that weren't available to you previously. You mentioned Town Hall, did you, in Hancock, did you approach the town of Hancock last year about using their space and they said no?
I will admit, we, we did not check Hancock then.
Okay, just checking, thanks.
All right, I have first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four, oh. Thank you, Mr. Jackson, Director.
Thank you, Barry.
Jackson, thank you. Next on the agenda is multi-signature change for order for comprehensive healthcare service for inmates. Major, please introduce yourself in the matter.
Good morning, Major Craig Rowe, Warden of the Washington County Detention Center. So the Washington County Sheriff's Office of Detention Division is requesting approval of a multi-signature change order so invoices for catastrophic billing can be paid and then submitted to the state for reimbursement. So our contract with Prime Care Medical states that the scope, in the scope of work, that the center will, uh, receive appropriate documentation and file for reimbursement, um, for the funds for the state of Maryland. So there's a section of code, section, uh, Maryland Correctional Services Article, Section 9405, states that any individual in excess of $25,000 in medical costs per fiscal year, uh, the state will reimburse upon submission of the, uh, proof that we paid it. They're unbudgeted funds because we never know, uh, what kind of inmates we're going to have, what kind of illnesses they're going to have. Unfortunately, in this last fiscal year, we had, and I can't go too much into detail because I don't want to give anything away or violate HIPAA, but we had a couple of inmates that, um, had a lot of medical issues. One in particular, the medication that that person had was $53,000 per month. So we're here, uh, asking for a move to approve a multi-signature change order that changes, um, that purchase order, uh, from $2,100,000. change order that changes, um, that purchase order, uh, from two million one hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents to two million three hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight and thirty-four cents, which is an increase of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to cover those claims so that we can submit to the state, and the state will then in turn reimburse us that fund. So it's just a process that the state uses. Um, so that's what we're here asking for.
Just out of curiosity, Major, what, that fifty, say, hypothetically, that fifty-three thousand for one medication, now, where did that come from? That fifty-three thousand come from?
Where did it come from?
Yeah.
That's what they billed us. That's, that's the actual cost of that medication.
And who paid, where'd that money come from to pay that?
Okay, initially, so Prime Care, uh, is part of the contract, they, they pay for, they submit the invoice to us, and then we pay it, and then, once we have proof of payment along with the invoices, then we turn around and, and submit them at the end of the fiscal year to the state, the reimbursement.
Okay.
The other discussion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Very none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four oh, thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Next up on the agenda, intergovernmental cooperative purchase, two vehicles for the Department of Order Quality. Mr. Bradshaw, Mr. Curry, please introduce yourselves in the matter.
Sub都需要intergovernmental cooperative purchase, INTG twenty-three dash zero one twenty-four. Two vehicles for the Department of Order Quality. Before we get started, Mark just passed out a quote from Apple Ford. On the RFP list, two vehicles, one being a twenty-twenty-two F three fifty, we just got word this morning that that F three fifty has been sold. That's why we have you that quote. We're gonna ask to approve that quote for the price of sixty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars for a twenty-twenty-three F three fifty, along with the one listed in the RFP for the F one fifty twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three F one fifty, pick up an amount of forty-seven, forty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. From Apple Ford, Lincoln of Columbia, Maryland, utilizing another jurisdiction's contract was awarded by Baltimore County Puppy Schools, contract number zero 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 four five zero four. Order Qualities asks to replace two vehicles that meets the county's criteria for replacement. Those vehicles will be sold on Gov. deals, and the Code of Public Law does allow for this board to participate in a contract that was awarded by another jurisdiction. When the cost savings is the administrative cost savings of not having to prepare a bid and going through all the processes, and funds are budgeted, then vehicles account VEH zero zero seven and VEH zero one ten. I know this is a last-minute thing, but these vehicles are a hot commodity. As you just heard me say, this vehicle was available as of an hour ago, it was just sold. So we need to move quickly if we're gonna purchase vehicles when we have opportunity to do so.
I have a, a question, if I can. The government price concession on the lesser expensive vehicle was thirty-one hundred dollars, but on this one, it's only six hundred dollars. Any insight as to why that is different?
I cannot answer that without having to talk with the bidder, the, uh, bidder. I did not notice that. I just got this last minute information from Mark.
Okay.
I'm quite sure it's in line with what's available, allowed under the contract.
I've also checked multiple lots around, like Frederick Motor, Hagerstown Ford, Keystone, Parsons up at Shippensburg, uh, Kent Parsons in Martinsburg, and I've also looked at the Sourcewell contract. Um, none of them have any F three fifties on the lot, and Sourcewell contract will not even accept bids right now for pickups. It's, it's great ice, you can't even order anything through the Sourcewell contract. So trucks are high demand right now, and are, they're challenged to locate, but luckily, uh, Apple Ford does have two of them down there, is what we want, so we watch permission to purchase them.
I maybe, I'm slightly confused. So the one you wanted got sold off from under you a little while ago.
Yes.
And the one you found to replace it?
Yes.
Is, how much more money?
Uh, sixty-six thousand, the other one was fifty-seven, so about nine grand.
More.
It's a newer version.
Yeah, I get that, but is there, because you had your eye on, you know, I'm going back to like civilian life here. If you had your eye on, uh, the one you wanted for less money, there's no way to take a shot and get that held somehow until you got here, or?
The only way you could do that if we had.
So we lost several thousand dollars because we couldn't meet in time.
That's, that's the end of the story, yes. We couldn't get in here to get request permission.
Because you're not here, and not your fault by any means, and we meet once a week, unless it's an emergency, it costs the county seven or eight thousand dollars. There's gotta be a way around that, is there?
This is the second instance we've had this happen.
What's the way around that?
You give me the authority to make that decision on the spot.
Maybe a blanket purchase order?
Um, blanket purchase order? What would that?
I mean, I don't want to lose, I'd trust, you know, what we've heard in the past from, from you, Rick, that I, I don't want to keep losing seven, eight thousand dollars because we're, we can't grab a vehicle. I mean, that's just the nature of the world right now. Maybe for short term, and when the vehicles come plentiful, then we don't worry about it anymore. Or if it happened twice, you know, it could be twenty grand we lost.
This is the second incident I know within the last three to four months. We'd had one just out of Hagerstown Ford. Mark was had his eye on. We come in to, to present, to, uh, ask for permission to buy it. It was sold right at that very moment.
So what would it take to make that change?
It would take for you to give me the authority to make that decision above that fifty thousand threshold?
So take a change in the purchasing policy?
Yes.
Actually, I think the fifty thousand dollar threshold is per state code, isn't that?
That is the state code on the threshold for fifty, because the board, board approval.
So what's the way around it?
Are you saying state code?
Change.
Yes.
May require a legislative change, the Code of Public Law.
Crazy. Two things here then. We, you want this motion approved to make this purchase?
Yes, sir.
And then we need to inquire about how to make that legislative for that change to give you that authority.
Legislative, and that's made me to, on a yearly basis, so it's already happened.
Can we get a consensus to move forward, trying to find out how we can make that change correctly? Is, commissioners, that, is that okay?
Yeah.
And then next, then a, a motion to approve this purchase.
Motion to approve this purchase.
Second.
And with that discussion, explore ways, you know, old school, you give them some kind of deposit to hold, it, it might be non-refundable, see if that's an option.
I mean, I have done letters of intent in the past, but that's just intent. But if someone comes along and says, I'm willing to buy that vehicle, they're gonna sell that vehicle.
Well, explore different ways, like can we give you five grand to hold a, I mean, we're losing more than that by losing it. So, but anyway.
And if we're, are we still purchasing two vehicles, or is only one available now?
No, we're still purchasing two.
So it's still almost twenty thousand dollars that we've potentially lost?
Yes.
I mean, that's one taxpayer working for five, six years, paying taxes, county government that's just been lost.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four oh, can I, Administrator, uh, make sure we follow through with that request?
Hello.
Thank you.
And the vehicles we're replacing, they'll be sold on Gov. deals?
Yes, sir.
One of them was actually wrecked in total.
Oh.
And the other one is, uh, a two thousand three F two fifty. So that's the three fifties replacing, replacing three fifty. That has a hundred and seventy-three thousand miles, and we have a broken leaf spring on it, which damaged the hub, so it's gonna need a lot of repair work, so we will be selling it as this will go.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Curry, you're up again. Please introduce the matter. Mr. Matheny, Sergeant Matheny.
Again, Rick Curry, Inter, Director of Purchasing.
Alan Matheny, Washington County Sheriff's Office.
Sub都需要intergovernmental cooperative purchase, INTG twenty-three dash zero one twenty-three, to Chevrolet Equinox, the Sheriff's Office. Move to ultimate resolution, the Sheriff's Office to purchase two new twenty-twenty-four Chevrolet Equinox in amount of twenty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars each, for a total cost of fifty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars, from Heritage Fleet Service Incorporated of Milford, Delaware, and to utilize another jurisdiction's contract that was awarded by Howard County, contract number four four zero 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 four five four six. Sheriff's Office requests to replace two vehicles that meets the county's criteria for replacement of vehicles, and the Code of Public Law does allow for this body to participate, and a contract was awarded by another jurisdiction, utilizing the administrative savings of not having to prepare a bid and going through the bidding process, and funds are available in department's account list on the RFP, and the quote is attached showing the prices from Heritage Fleet.
Motion to approve.
Second, will this be a, a cruiser? Are we using Equinoxes now for?
No, these will be for detectives.
Okay, understood.
Hey, first and second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Brandy Noggle, rejection of quote, purchase and installation of a new coiling steel door. Please introduce yourselves in the matter.
Good morning, Brandy Noggle, Byron, Purchasing Department.
Mark Bradshaw, Director of Environmental Management.
The first recommendation I have for you this morning is the rejection of quote Q-dash-twenty-three seven fifty-nine, the purchase and installation of one new steel coiling door. Move to take action in the best interest of the county to request the quote for the purchase and installation of one new coiling steel door for the Department of Water, Water Quality be rejected due to the quote exceeding the estimated budget. We're also requesting to re-advertise this for pricing. Uh, this was listed on the state of Maryland's website and the county website. Eighteen companies downloaded the document. We did only receive one bid back. So we want to modify the specification, tighten it up, and send it back out.
Do we need a motion to reject the first one and a motion to accept, or what do we need?
Yes, please.
Motion to reject.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. To reject?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome back, Brandy. Please introduce yourself, yourselves in the matter.
Brandy Noggle, Byron, Purchasing Department.
Danny Hickson, Deputy Director of Public Works.
My next recommendation is to rescind contract award P U R sixteen-eleven, janitorial services for Washington County office buildings. Move to relieve F E F Cleaning out of Old Sappel, Pennsylvania, from their contract without prejudice for the contracted cleaning services at the Washington County office buildings. This was originally approved by the commissioners on June sixth for an amount of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars annually. On Thursday, August the third, we received a letter from F E F requesting that they be relieved of their contract. Due to unforeseen circumstances within the company and a misquoted pricing on their part, they decided it was not advantageous for them to continue the contract. Uh, we did have a conference call with the vendor to try to correct this issue. Um, it was not favorable on either side to do so. We allowed them to submit new pricing. Um, we received their new pricing, and it was gonna cost the county an additional eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars annually. So we did accept their letter to rescind their bid, um, without prejudice, and we would like to award to the next vendor.
So there's a lot of backstory here, it sounds like.
There is, there is.
Yeah, we need a cleaning service. So they're not cleaning, are their employees gonna retain, be retained?
So we, we can't say that for certain. That's up to the vendor coming in. We do have their contact information to give to that vendor. This company's been through some things in the past two months.
So who cleaned like last night?
Nobody.
Nobody.
No. It, each office is responsible for doing anything at this point in time till we can get the next one in, in place.
Which buildings did this cover? This, this building, um, did it cover?
Yeah, um, the downtown buildings, uh, Sheriff's Department, the Wick Building, the Ag Center, Water Qualities, nine-one-one Center.
I'd motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, I have a couple more questions. Uh, so, um, how many people do they, in, is it the same people going around to each of the buildings? Is it, I'm sure they probably have some kind of rotating schedule. And where I'm getting to is, um, for a contract that will be over a quarter of a million dollars, um, have we ever done a study or looked into the cost of doing this in-house?
I believe years ago, it was done. I can't say that for certain, but it was a cost savings for us to do that through a company versus paying individuals, because this building alone has four people in it throughout the week. Then you have a building down the street that has two, and of course, the other buildings. I think there's a shared woman between nine-one-one and the Sheriff's Department. So there's about, how many people would you say?
I wanna, we had eight on staff, and I think four staff, they needed about twelve people.
Okay.
So we are benefiting by going to it.
Was there anything in the contract that holds them to it, or holds, holds us, you know? I mean, we're being harmed by this.
We are, but.
So what's, what's, does the contract say about their responsibilities?
So they are allowed to ask for a price increase, and it is up to the county to accept or reject that. Um, however, the company is gonna be liquidated. The new owner has decided that she can't perform services anymore at this con, this is what we've been told by the staff. So we're, even if they were to stay in business, we're not in the business of putting companies out of business by making them adhere to something they can't, they can't pay their employees. So it is, again, it, it's in the contract, we can accept or, or reject. So we seen, and it's in the best interest of both parties to allow them to rescind.
Are they going through bankruptcy, or are they just changing ownership?
I can't say for certain. I only know what her people had told me, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna say. Uh, they, she, they, she told her people she was liquidating the company. There's been some issues within the company, um, since they started, out of their control.
Where are they based again? Where are they based again?
Old Sappel, Pennsylvania.
Okay.
There's a motion on the first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three, one, staying. Brandy, what's next?
Okay, my last recommendation is for the contract award P U R sixteen-eleven, and that is janitorial services for county office buildings. Move toward the janitorial contract to the next low responsive responsive bidder, Jasso Maintenance, under option number one, for a total amount of two hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars annually, and for the services as listed in the report. This contract is for a one-year period, with the county's, uh, allowance to renew up to four consecutive one-year periods, and it's tentatively to start September of this year. And funding is available in the departmental budgets for the additional costs.
Commissioners, thoughts, comments, motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second, if we could, with some comment, could we just look at, again, just to make sure this, this is the most cost-effective route? I just, I kind of wonder why our schools don't hire, you know, contracted custodians, that, why that isn't a cheaper option for them, but it is for us. So I know they're different buildings, there're different tasks that are involved, but just, um, you know, I've been in here in the evenings when the cleaning personnel's are here, and I, I mean, I'm sure that, maybe they're in different parts of the building, but I, I've not seen that many, and, um, they're not here into the wee hours of the night, so maybe there's an opportunity for us still.
Good idea. Have first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four oh, thank you very much. Next up, the Washington County Gaming Commission.
Good morning, Susan Cannon, Director Office of Grant Management. With me this morning is Sam Cool, the Chair of the Washington County Gaming Commission. And we are here this morning, and Rachel is, um, passing out the press release. She does have the list of the Gaming Commission awards this year, and, um, that is the reason we are here, to present both the annual report to the Board of County Commissioners, and to announce the commission's fiscal year twenty-twenty-three funding decisions. Now, in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, the Gaming Commission had available two million, five hundred and forty-three thousand, thirty dollars and thirty-four cents for distribution to local charitable organizations and the Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association. This figure reflects a decrease in revenues of forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents when compared to the previous fiscal year, in accordance with state with state statute, fifty percent of the funding received is allocated to the Washington County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association and the remaining has been allocated to charitable organizations located in Washington County. In May of 2023, the Gaming Commission received eighty-five funding applications from seventy-three charitable organizations. The total amount of funding requested with those eighty-five applications was two million, nine hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. The applications were reviewed and considered by each Gaming Commissioner and after review, group deliberations, gaming hearing held in June, the Gaming Commission determined appropriate funding allocations based on the published guidelines for distribution of gaming funds. At this point, I will, of the presentation, I will turn the mic over to Mr. Cool for his remarks.
Not a whole lot to say. We had a lively discussion. Obviously, when more folks are asking for more money and there's less money, the conversations were pretty lively. But I think we came up with some very succinct.
I appreciate it. I mean, how many people make this decision? How many's on the?
Five.
Five of you?
Yeah.
And these proceeds come from what they call the tip jars?
This is tip jar revenue. That's voluntary participation.
So that, last year, we had a better year than this fiscal year.
Yes, the last several years have actually been booming years as far as revenues. We're still at a high amount, if this is a slight decrease. We did have a low year in 2020 because of the shutdowns at the end of fiscal year 2020 because of the COVID pandemic. But the last couple of years have been very high revenue and it's just started to go down a little bit, typically reflecting price of gasoline, inflation, things of that, less disposable income in the pockets.
Yeah, not to get in the big discussion about it, but just name of some of the criteria you look at when you do this. I'm just curious.
Well, a lot of it's historical based. I mean, certainly you've got the major nonprofits in our community that make a huge, huge difference. So again, the five of us and the staff certainly review. The criteria is a little different because we want to make sure that the sports leagues and, you know, the people getting fed are certainly taken care of. So it's a moral judgment that comes down to it and it's debated quite a bit. You know, I don't know what percent came in and did, you know, presentations in front of us, but there's a percent that came in and.
I mean, application does ask each organization to provide a statement of need. We look at the need in the community, whether it's a need to have or a nice to have. I mean, that's some of the things that are discussed. Looking at the organization's capacity to be able to provide the services. We also ask about fundraising efforts that each organization does. We want to look to see that organizations are doing things to help themselves and not just relying on grant funding.
And the accounting part, too. We pay great deal attention to the financials.
So there's five people on this committee? Who determines who the five are?
I was nominated by Seraphini.
Actually, there is, there's seven positions on the Gaming Commission. There were five that met this year because we did have, we have six that are filled currently. We have an open position for the Restaurant and Beveries Association. We have not been able to get someone that was willing to serve this year on that position that had the ability to. There are six members of the commission. One member had a personal crisis that came up and she was not able to participate in this year. So this year, five did do the deliberations.
So where do the five come from? Are they allocated to different businesses or an association? Do the commissioners here have any say about it at all?
By state statute, the makeup of the Gaming Commission is that there are four members of the Gaming Commission that are appointed by the state delegation. There are three appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. Two of the state appointees are restricted. One must represent the Restaurant and Beverage Association and the other is the Club Association representative.
Okay, and you have no written criteria to guide your allocations?
There are, the guidelines that are in place are basically the general eligibility, which would be they have to be a five A one C three, which is located in Washington County, Maryland and serving Washington County residents. But they're, within the application process, the questions that are asked and the things that are looked at when are just, when we review, we're looking at like the things I mentioned, the need in the community, the capacity.
So about fifteen sports teams, little league's got two thousand dollars each.
Yeah, historically, the commission has elected when they receive these types of applications from youth sports leagues or even if it was cultural activities, fires and things, that they, they try to make a standardized award equal across the board. And that's dependent upon the amount of funding, the amount of requests, and what's going on that particular year.
So how much time did you have to spend to sort through all this?
There's boxes and boxes of copies of the request. So we meet like four or five times a year, but we all individually review and then each of the profits get broken up. It's five. If it's a larger sum of money, you have multiple people.
Thank you for putting all that time into all this. Appreciate it. It's good work.
Yeah, thank you, girl.
All right, this is for informational only. Does this have to come back to our final approval?
No approval needed. The Gaming Commission is the point of authority for this. I do want to take one second to thank the rest of the Gaming Commission. I know, I want to list their names just for their recognition. I believe Mary Lee Kearns is in the audience. She's a new addition this year. In addition, we have Matt Schnibley, Mike Hanson, Deb Reiser, and Dawn Wintermeyer. And I want to thank them for all their time and efforts.
So with the, there's openings now, it sounds like, is there? So how does, who, are they legislative or?
There is a legislative opening currently. It's just, we're trying to find, the restaurant and beverage industry, as you can imagine, has gone through a lot over the last couple of years. We've been very, we've been trying to get people to agree to come in to do it, but the time commitment, none of them have been willing to do so. So we're, keep working.
Sam just sits around and eats bonbons, don't you, Sam?
Pretty much. This is my last meeting.
Reading.
Oh, no.
All right, anything else?
I can give you the breakdown of the membership if you want.
Please do.
There are seven members of the Gaming Commission, all of whom need to be a resident of Washington County. Of those seven, three shall be appointed by the county commissioners. One shall be appointed by the state senators whose district are in or include part of the county. One shall be appointed by the chairperson of the county delegation to the House of Delegates with the concurrence of that delegation. One shall be from the Washington County Clubs Association, appointed by the county senate and house delegations. And one shall be a representative of the alcoholic beverages, restaurant, and tavern industries in the county, appointed by the county senate and house delegations.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, police recruitment and retention grant. Cody Miller. Rachel, please introduce yourselves in the matter.
Good morning, Rachel Souders, Senior Grant Manager, Office of Grant Management.
Morning, Cody Miller, Washington County Sheriff's Office.
The Police Recruitment and Retention Grant Program provides funding to recruit and retain qualified sworn law enforcement officers, particularly for expenses that are not otherwise covered in local budgets. The Governor's Office of Crime Prevention, Youth and Victim Services has awarded the Washington County Sheriff's Office thirty thousand dollars for FY twenty-four. Twenty thousand, three hundred twenty-seven dollars will be used to purchase new boots for all deputies and nine thousand, six hundred seventy-three dollars will be used for a billboard advertisement to boost recruitment. So we are here today seeking a motion to approve acceptance of the awarded funding.
Is that more than last year or about the same?
About the same.
Motion to approve.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, the firefighter career ladder. Director Hayes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Michelle Gordon, Acting County Administrator.
David Chisholm, Director of Emergency Services.
David Chisholm, Deputy Director of Emergency Services.
After discussions with the Division of Emergency Services, Human Resources, Budget and Finance in the County Administrator's Office, we've outlined the need for the development of a career ladder for employees in firefighter roles. Staff recommendations include that we create two new job classifications titled as firefighter recruit, D E S grade two, and a firefighter, D E S grade three. Currently, potential candidates must meet the minimum qualifications as outlined in the job description for the firefighter slash fire apparatus operator, which is a D E S grade four, in order to begin employment with county fire operations. Those requirements limit the number of potential candidates and that are able to apply for vacant positions and that creates a hardship for the department as well as county residents. Establishing these new job classifications creates a career ladder that will enable the department to recruit individuals with little to no experience and promote employees during the year as they attain the proper certifications and experience. Career ladders also promote staff retention, motivate the workforce to improve their skills, attract talented candidates who want to develop a career, and show our staff that they are valued. This initiative will foster a collaborative effort with Washington County Public Schools. It will open the doors to the pool of candidates who are recent graduates of the Technical High School from their fire and rescue academy, and it'll also retain and employ those talented individuals in Washington County. Based on the number of current vacancies, which are about five, in the department, no additional positions are being requested at this time. And based on those vacancies and the fact that these positions are of lower grades, the new job classifications will remain budget neutral for the department.
So just quick clarification. You want to take the technical high kids who graduate, right?
This, this classification will allow us the opportunity to hire those. Our current classification would hire firefighter apparatus operators and they don't meet the age requirement.
So if I come out of technical, tech high, right now, you couldn't hire us. And if we said yes, then you could hire tech high. And some of those tech high are also E M Ts, correct?
Most come out graduated from an E M T class.
So they'll be firefighter to E M T. Is that correct? Well, with that being said, you have a class of, I don't know what we had last time, twelve or fifteen or eleven or something?
From tech high?
Yeah.
I think it was twelve.
Okay, eleven or twelve. Who, how do you determine what's two or whatever you take out of that? Who, who makes that determination? Who interviews? As you work in collaboration with the schools, based on how they did through the school? Or is it all just our staff? Or I guess I'm more concerned about how, or interested in how you pick and whose responsibility is to pick the two that you want to hire?
So this proposal here today is just establishing the positions that allow that group to come into eligible and hire. It's not, not going after those positions specifically in this proposal.
So this proposal doesn't give you authority to hire them. It just says,
Right.
we give you authority to put this, implement this program, and then we'll cross the next bridge of, of the mechanics of hiring these individuals.
They would still need to apply for the positions individually.
But the question I would have to piggyback off of Brandy's comment is, just tell us, what is the process for hiring someone in D E S?
It follows the same county hiring process with the exception of we do a physical abilities test and we establish an eligibility list that they're chosen from once we.
So who's on the hiring panel?
It's usually internal to the division and if we have an H R representative.
Okay, and I think one of the things that I would like our new H R person to do is take a good look at across the board in the county of how we do hire people and making sure that we've got not just H R involved, but someone from outside the division, whether it's your division or the nine-one-one center or, you know, roads or parks and recreation, doesn't matter. I think we need to make sure we've got multiple people reviewing.
I really sort of like the idea of hiring out of tech high because I've sat there many graduations. How do we keep these people? How do we keep these kids, you know, here in our county doing what they want to do?
So if I can help with that conversation, the County Administrator and I had this conversation about tech high specific, probably a month, a month and a half ago, shortly after she took the interim position. That would be a totally separate proposal we would bring forward. If we were going to go after those specific graduates at any given time outside of the normal county hiring process, that would take a different proposal to just target those specific.
So this isn't targeting just tech high?
No, that's just an opening that allows them.
Why wouldn't we just, if, I don't want to get in the weeds on this right now, but why wouldn't we target all the new graduates out of tech high?
Our intent is to do that, but in order to get to that point, we need to have this firefighter grade available to us to do it.
Okay.
Now, the other thing I want to add is as we've hired, when we wrote the safer grant, it was written on firefighter apparatus operators because we didn't have full-time, we had eight full-time firefighters and we were only authorized to hire thirty-three. So we made everybody universal when we hired that group. And that's why we only sit on one open grade as far as firefighters themselves. What we're seeing is the number of applicants that are applying for the firefighter apparatus operator job announcement is shrinking because it requires pre-certification and several things, firefighter warrant, E M T, and some degree of experience. We're not far away from a time where we're going to have to run almost a full firefighter academy that takes somebody that maybe has no firefighting experience at all, who would be a qualified applicant, go through the county hiring process, and we train them from the beginning to the end. So some of this is looking to the future beyond the safer grant. What we're going to need is capacity to hire lesser trained people, train them at the training center, meet the qualifications, the total qualification.
You're going to give them a year to get trained up, certified. They're on probation during that year. And you're going to do regular evaluations and keep paperwork and?
There would be a probationary program.
But then keep, keep your paperwork and file it and do regular counseling and file it and?
I don't see any concurrences here. Who's in, who loves this? Does our budget and finance, does, I don't see any concurrences on this. I mean, who's, who thinks this is a great idea other than maybe me or somebody else?
We, we met with H R and budget and finance and they all concurred.
And they're going to start right out of high school at about forty-three thousand dollars a year?
So the recruit level?
One.
And I want to emphasize, it's not only going to open a door to just high school graduates. It would open a door to even a twenty-five-year-old that wants to be in the fire service.
Forty, I'm just wondering, forty-three thousand dollars? And?
County benefits.
And county benefits with no established skills or just based on an interview and maybe someone coming out of high school compared to, I'd have to think about this one some more.
Well, the minimum wage is fifteen dollars an hour. Forty-three thousand is seventeen dollars an hour. It's, it's not a lot more than minimum wage, truly.
Okay, point taken.
You know, we're already talking about a couple here, right? Two, two new positions, right? That's, I say only.
It's job classifications. There's no new positions. They already have.
Job classifications, yeah. So, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to follow this and I'd, I'd make a motion to approve it. I'm willing to follow it, but I'd want, I want to know more as it progresses.
I'll second. I know this is something that's been talked about many, many years, about how we could lure some of those graduates from our local training academy at the high school level and keep them local rather than them learning the skill, the trade, going down the road. If this is implemented, when, when do you think the first recruit in a firefighter recruit position could be hired? When, when would the first such person be hired?
So we're currently in the process of selecting candidates for recruit class number five. They would not fall into this one. So it would be recruit class number six, which likely would come about some, based on history, sometime in calendar year twenty-four.
Okay.
First, have first and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There's a pose?
Four out.
Abstain. Abstain.
Abstain, three and one. Thank you. Next, budget adjustment. Michelle Gordon.
I have a, okay, I have a number of budget adjustments on the agenda today. First budget adjustment is the Police Accountability Board. That board was established by the Maryland Police Accountability Act of 2021, Police Discipline and Law Enforcement Programs and Procedures Act. The county enacted ordinance twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two dash ten on June the seventh of 2022 to establish the Washington County, Maryland Police Accountability Board. The act further requires that each county establish the budget and staff for that board. The fiscal year twenty-four budget adjustment has been generated to create a fiscal year twenty-four budget for this newly formed board and is. and its expenditures are estimated at twenty-five thousand dollars. It's estimated to be funded by reductions in the contributions to the county pension fund.
You want to do these one by one, or you need approvals?
I think, I think individually, yes.
All right, do you want to approve?
I motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up?
The next one, the next budget adjustment is a fiscal year twenty-four budget adjustment to fund the recently approved contract with the Humane Society of Washington County and the recently approved addition of one position to the county attorney's office. The total cost of this budget adjustment is four hundred ninety thousand, six hundred forty dollars, and is to be funded by reducing the county's additional contribution to the pension fund in the amount of ninety thousand, six hundred forty dollars and increasing revenue for admission and amusement tax by four hundred thousand dollars. If you recall, during the budget process, there was a consensus of the commission to eliminate the admission and amusement tax, and Budget and Finance did not include a budget for it. The consensus of the commission has since changed, and we need to establish a budget for that particular revenue item.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second, okay, good. I second.
Any for, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No, and I'll state that I still haven't received a list of those Humane Society functions, animal control, that's required by state law, and those that, that are at county discretion.
Okay, thank you. Next.
The next budget adjustment relates to, on July the eleventh of twenty twenty-three, the commission ratified the memorandum of understanding between the county, Town of Hancock, and Brewston Farm Services to provide funding in an amount up to and not to exceed one hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty-four cents during that discussion. It was indicated that that funding would come from reductions in C I P reserves.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, with the question, so this was first brought up last, probably a year ago, June or July of last year,
Correct.
under the prior board, and we were looking to use funding at that time, and I realize it's a different board, which is fine, using surplus from that year. In essence, is that what we're still doing, just?
Correct. It's just, it's surplus from C I P reserves. It's essentially the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, four oh. Next.
The next item relates to unbudgeted need for increased funding for the county attorney's office for unplanned contractual costs associated with outside legal services of one hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars. Proposed funding that by reductions to contributions to the pension fund.
Michelle, what percentage of this one hundred eighty thousand dollars relates to an enterprise fund? Is this? Or are we not there?
A little more than fifty percent of it, probably.
Okay. Is there any reason why, since it relates to an enterprise fund, we don't use an enterprise funding for this? I guess I can't go into too much detail, but.
What typically contractual, typically, our outside legal services are paid for out of the county attorney's budget, and that's typically funded out of the general fund. That's why we included it there.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll abstain.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three oh one.
The next budget adjustment is to increase funding for the County Information Technology Department for the unplanned software costs that were approved on April the eighteenth of twenty twenty-three. Two hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred twelve dollars at that time was approved to be funded as a one-time use of general fund reserves.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second with the comment, this, like many of the others, we knew these expenses were coming back in April, et cetera, and we looked at this. It's just, we're just cleaning it up.
We're just cleaning it up, correct.
Okay.
Any further comment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four oh.
The next is a fiscal year twenty-three budget revision, and this is just kind of to clean up some things as well. It's needed to reallocate vacancy savings between several departments based on the actual experience rather than the original estimates made during the fiscal year twenty-three budget process. This budget adjustment has no financial impact at all and is budget neutral.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Correct.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four oh.
The last, the last budget adjustment is also for fiscal year twenty-three. It is to transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from the park bathroom renovations project, I'm sorry, to the park bathroom renovations project from the park equipment servicing replacement project. The county received and applied state, local parks and playground infrastructure funds towards multiple project, park modernization projects. The bathroom renovation project has had expenses that exceed the original budget. Other projects have been under budget, so we're just transferring those between those two projects, and it is budget neutral as well.
Motion to approve. Second?
Second.
The discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Four oh. Okay, that concludes the session. Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.